Good evening. My name is Tanya Bowers and I would like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission Meeting to Order. I would like to welcome all those in attendance this evening and ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with whistling just as a crow.
To begin tonight's meeting, I would like to ask the clerk to call the roll. Tanya Bowers, present. Joseph Campos.
Present.
Paul Mendez.
Present.
Abel Campos.
Present.
Isaac Myron.
Present.
Pam Rensier. Jerry Cochran.
Present.
Madam, there are six members present and we do have a quorum. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by the city council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to city council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I would like to remind the audience, tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Charter Cable PSC Channel 191 and will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. This meeting is also being recorded so you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. Click on the video on demand link and make your selection there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available on the back table so you may follow along with the meeting. At this time, I would like to ask that you silence your cell phones to prevent interruptions during our meeting. For those present this evening, when you are given the opportunity to address the commission, please come to the podium, speak clearly into the microphone, and state your name and city of address for our records. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington State law requires public meetings, like the one being held this evening, not only be fair but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member may have a direct interest or may either be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. An objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time or it will be waived. First, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any items on the agenda? Let the record show that there were no declarations. Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any Planning Commission member hearing any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show that there were no declarations. We value your input. We, as a Planning Commission, need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendations to city council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at this Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get the facts, your facts and opinions placed into the official record the city council will use to make its decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of this opportunity. The next item is the approval of the meeting minutes from the June 18th meeting. These meeting minutes were mailed out to the commissioners ahead of time. I trust you had an opportunity to take a look at them. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
I would motion to approve the meeting minutes as read.
Second.
Commissioner Jay Campos has moved and it has been seconded by Commissioner Cochran. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? So let the record show that the meeting minutes were unanimously approved. We do not have any old business, so we are now proceeding to public hearings. The first item is a block grant, which is a request for the 2021 Community Block Grant CDBG allocations. Master File BGAP 2020-003. We will start our discussion with comments from the city staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item is an annual consideration by the Planning Commission, which is the city council's block grant advisory committee. Pasco's an entitlement community, which means we receive the federal entitlement for block grant funds every year without having to compete for those same funds. This year, for 2021, we expect to receive approximately $700,000. And if you combine the 2021 expectations with prior year's unspent funds and program income, we have a little more than $1 million to allocate for the roughly $1.8 million in applications that we received. So tonight, and I'll advance the slide, hopefully you'll be able to see the initial recommendation. Tonight, we have a staff recommendation for the commission that takes into account the applications received. As obviously you can tell, if we have a little more than $1 million in funds to allocate and $1.8 million in requests, there are certain unfunded items. But essentially, I did want to call your attention to at least a couple of these items. The downtown Pasco facade improvement, which is the second activity on the far left, is a new item this year. That was not in last year's request. And the recommendation is to fund, we believe, two facade improvement projects in the downtown. The $25,000 for the Energy Efficient Home Program, which is directly underneath the facade improvement program, is a result of program income that was received for old rehabilitation loans that are being paid back. Federal requirements require those to be used for the same kind of activities that they were initially lent for. And then if you continue down the project to the City of Pasco Public Works Engineering, where did it go? Pasco Neighborhood Business District Improvements. There's almost a $400,000 recommendation there, a little bit less than $400,000. This involves a physical improvement of Lewis Street in the downtown area. And it is designed to coincide with both the Peanuts Park renovation and Farmer's Market renovation that is being processed through the Section 108 debt repayment, which is the next item underneath this. The Lewis Street is expected to be improved in phases, and if I'm not mistaken, this involves both Phases 1 and Phases 2, which involve completely revamping the street, widening the sidewalks, and establishing improved parking and streetscapes. And then, of course, the big item, the Section 108 debt repayment, is new. That was not in previous staff recommendations. And just as way of an update, the one bid that was received for this project was rejected this past Monday at city council. So that means that the project will be, actually, the bid specifications will be reworked, revised for some clarity, for starters, and they'll be put out to bid again. So there may be an extra $200,000 that we could allocate. And that's why the projects that were not recommended for funding this year be listed as contingencies, because in the event we have that money, then that can be used for any of the starred items that you see. Actually, I don't see any starred items. They're on my, are they? Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, good. Thank you. Double stars. So with that, I wanted to keep this brief. I'll be glad to try to answer any of the commission's questions.
Commissioners, questions for staff?
I had one question, not any particular one, but questions coming up nowadays is as we assess these, is the viability to execute based on our current economic and COVID work conditions been assessed so that, you know, you give the money and then, but they can't execute, so the money doesn't get spent? Is that a factor in the assessment?
It was until about a month ago when we went to the modified Phase 1, let's say, that allows the construction projects to continue whether they were entered into prior to COVID or not. So it was, but a very important factor in assessing the recommendations is the perceived ability of the agency making the request to carry out the projects. And some of them are complex and much more difficult than others. Madam Chairman, excuse me, I did want to make sure that the commission knows that this is a continued public hearing. And when the commission is ready, just let me know. And I think there are several attendees that wish to make comments.
Good to know. Thank you. Any other questions from commissioners? I will ask some since it does not appear that anyone is piping up. My first question was that I know frequently Angie makes recommendations based on knowledge that there are other funds some of the applicants can go after. So I was wondering why both of the requests that came in from the Boys and Girls Club were rejected?
Well, they were listed as contingencies. The first one was the COVID teen, I think it was called teen relief. That actually is a public service and we're up against our public service cap of 15%. And then the second one, I think that's the remodeling project. It's a very expensive project. It's the first time submitted and tends to be very complex. We'll, assuming, I think a little more vetting of that application needs to occur before we can comfortably allocate the $260,000 for the proposal.
And also with the Downtown Pasco Development Authority, their micro enterprise grant program, was that also because we had met our cap?
Yes.
Are there, so if the funds are released or we get this extra 200K, we might be able to spread the love?
Then that 15% gets commensurately higher, not a lot, but some. And possibly they could be looked at again.
And then my next question was regarding the Code Enforcement Officer, number 13. I noticed the request was for $100,000 even though the recommendation was to give them $70,000, but the $100,000 was just to fund one of five code enforcement officers? And it says salary and benefits? I wasn't sure if...
Yeah. Salary and benefits, yes. And $70,000 is the amount that was funded last year, 2019.
Good to know. Thank you. So not seeing any other questions from my fellow commit? Do you have a question?
Yeah. I'll ask one now. I just want to clarify, Rick, what you're saying is that we have applicants who would like to make comment on this prior to us making any sort of decision?
That's true. I'm not sure they're applicants, but they, I believe, are signed up for this issue.
Okay. Okay. All right. I think that's it for me.
Perfect. So I guess now we're going to go to the public, continue with our public hearing. So any individuals who wish to speak on this particular item, now is the time to come forward. Please state your name and just the city of your address for the record. Mr. White will call on you.
I will do my best. I can't remember exactly how I unmute the applicants. Hold on, please.
John Funfar is coming to unmute at the podium.
The first person signed up is Crystal Torres. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Crystal Torres and I'm from Pasco.
What, great. Thank you. Please proceed.
And I would just like to say that we're not, or I don't agree that DPDA receives any more funds.
Okay. DPDA. Downtown Pasco Development Authority.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to share?
Just pretty much that. We've had so many issues with DPDA and not just that, but them losing money, especially with the Cinco de Mayo event. And they keep asking for funds to help out the downtown businesses. And so far, we haven't seen any help of any kind. So I would just like to see DPDA not being funded anymore.
It's, thank you so much for speaking and it really helps us to have a background or context to put your comments into, Ms. Torres.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
The next signee is David Cortinas.
Mr. Cortinas. Name and city of address.
David Cortinas, 4501 Moline Lane in Pasco, Washington. Mrs. Bowers and commissioners for the Planning Commission, I come before you today to also second Mrs. Torres' recommendation that you make a recommendation to the city council members. I know that this year, the city councilman, Mr. District 5, I can't remember his name right now, had questions concerning funding DPDA in January and asked to take it off the table and then handle it as a single item. And even though they supported it, I knew that the City of Pasco city council members had concerns of continuing to funding the DPDA. With that said, since 2015, the DPDA has lost more than $300,000 of community funds that has been allocated to the DPDA. In 2016, Executive Director Michael Goings was sent to jail for stealing $143,000 of those funds. He was, he agreed to pay back in restitution $262,000. In 2017, the DPDA lost $3,000 at the end of their funding year. In 2018, under Luke, the new executive director and under President Portugal, the Cinco de Mayo lost $19,000. And in 2019, under Damian, who took over as an acting president and president and, or exact, acting executive director and was over the specialty kitchen and the farmer's market, and Mr. Portugal as president of the DPDA, they lost more than $32,000 in the Cinco de Mayo. And I can't say too much about this new Mr. Gustavo Cortez. I hear he's been working hard and doing a good job. But again, in this year, of course, Cinco de Mayo was canceled, but he signed contracts approved by the board and President Portugal, and they lost more than $7,000 at this year's Cinco de Mayo and not even having the event. With this said, Madam Chair, Ms. Bowers and commissioners, I strongly agree with many of the downtown business owners who are recommending to the city council and asking you, the Planning Commission, to do the same, that DPDA is no longer funded until they can show a proven record of handling community funds in a better manner. And as I have followed the history of the DPDA, I have noticed that these funds continue being mishandled and one executive director going to jail for it. Also, the DPDA has had a hard time trying to get volunteers on the board. At this time, I know they have openings, someone just resigned, the owner of Downtown Pasco Furniture Store. I talked to him and he resigned just recently. They also have a board member that doesn't even live in the city limits, lives in Seattle and is serving to help fill the empty positions. I just feel that DPDA needs to be reorganized, get new leaders, and stop receiving funds from the CDBG funds or any other funds until they can show a proven record and stop losing funds, community funds that are allocated to them by the City of Pasco.
Thank you, Mr. Cortinas. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Mr. White?
Next listed is Veronica Ramirez.
Veronica Ramirez, can we have your name and city of address, please?
Again, I'm having issues unmuting this signee.
Please give us a moment, Ms. Ramirez. Oh, it sounds like, Ms. Ramirez, you need to unmute yourself if you're interested in speaking.
Okay. Sorry. Okay. My name is Veronica Ramirez. I'm one of the commercialists in downtown Pasco and I don't agree to give the money to DPDA that receives funds in the name of our commercialists.
Can you, hold on one second? Senora Ramirez, we need, we might need someone to translate. And I don't believe we have an official translator on here. I don't know if anyone else on the line might be able to translate for us?
Madam Chair, I have unmuted Crystal Torres just randomly if she might be able to. And if not, I could try Mr. Cortinas.
Would anyone else like to help translate? Senora Ramirez?
No, I don't have nothing ready with me.
Nobody with you? Okay. All right. You can, you can go ahead and speak in Spanish and hopefully some people on the line will understand you.
It looks like David Cortinas is, he's got a hand there. It looks like if we unmute him, it looks like he's...
Oh, we gotta unmute Mr. Cortinas. Okay. One moment, please. We're trying to unmute you, Mr. Cortinas.
He's self muted, ma'am.
Oh, you're self muted, Mr. Cortinas. Thank you for your patience, everyone. Okay. Are you able to translate?
Yes, no problem.
Okay. Please proceed, Ms. Ramirez.
Gracias. Sorry.
It's okay.
You need to speak in Spanish, okay?
It's okay. En español.
Right. Okay. We don't agree to give the money to DPDA in the name of the commercialists in downtown because DPDA doesn't represent the commercialists in downtown.
Okay. Minuto. Mr. Cortinas, can you translate that, please?
Yeah. Ms. Ramirez says that she does not agree that the DPDA continues receiving funds. They do not represent the downtown businesses.
We don't see any beneficial, any benefits by the DPDA with the businesses downtown.
We've had a lot of problems in trying to fill out applications with the grants that are being issued. Many have not been helped with the grants and they continue not wanting to help with grants.
Okay. And Ms. Ramirez's city of address?
Direction?
518 West Clark Street.
518 West Clark Street.
Perfect. Gracias.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Cortinas.
No problem. I just felt to say on my part, Madam, that lots of the documentation that I spoke about and the numbers that I spoke about, Treasurer Mike Miller offered those documents to me since 2016 when he was Treasurer of the DPDA and resigned last year.
Great. Thank you. Okay, Mr. White. Anyone else? No. Okay. So we have heard from several individuals. And if we do not have, I'm supposed to close the public hearing. So I would like to ask anyone else if they'd like to speak? Going? Going? Gone. Okay. So now it is time for commissioners. I would entertain a motion.
Can I ask another?
Not, please? Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So regarding the one that had so much feedback on the Downtown Pasco Development Authority, the way I read this is it's, it's a facade improvement, not directly, so I guess my, is there accountabilities, given the considerations that the folks spoke about, is there accountabilities that this is, this is a facade improvement for certain areas downtown and it'll be executed, I assume, by a contractor? Is there controls and accountability on that or is that totally up to the Downtown Pasco Development Authority execute and manage? Or do we have some assurances because of the nature of this that it'll actually be executed well and some control? So that just, because I think that could be mitigations to what we just heard as concerns.
Yes, the facade improvement program, the federal money, so there are multitudes of accountability... multitudes of, uh, accountability standards and regulations. As a matter of fact, that's one of the problems we have with the facade improvement program is that there are so many, um, accountability measures to take that, uh, people often don't feel it's worth it. So that isn't an issue there, and remember, the facade improvement program is to fund specific businesses, not the DPDA. This, and the same with this money for the specialty kitchen, that, that is for the benefit of the specialty kitchen, which prior to COVID nineteen had about forty-five or fifty clients. Uh, that's to help those forty-five or fifty clients continue with their operations out of the kitchen that they take to other, other locations. The DPDA itself is funded from a completely different set of funds, uh, the Economic Development Fund, uh, which is not, uh, funded through taxes, but is funded through, uh, the city's revenues from the crop circles that are leased to growers and processors north of town, the fourteen crop circles the city owns, Fund One ninety-four, the Economic Development Fund. So there are no tax monies being paid in for, uh, the DPDA aside from what was just mentioned for block rent.
Again, this is, we're not just dumping this into DPDA coffers for them to just go spend, this is a very specific project on which they applied for, but has other controls that make sure it gets executed and not ill managed.
Yes, that's completely accurate.
Okay, thank you for that question and point of clarification. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Just Commissioner Campos, I have a question.
Please, A. Campos.
For, uh, the DPDA, didn't they also request, um, for specific grants for downtown businesses?
Oh, well, I was asked, I, I had asked about, um, one of the requests, there were three requests that they made, two of which, uh, Angie put in here, we were just discussing, one of them is actually for the Pasco Specialty Kitchen and the others for the facade improvement program. The one which did not receive, uh, funding, but I think is slated for contingency funding was the request for a small business, micro enterprise grant program. So that does not go into this current recommendation. And am I correct in that if month, the two hundred thousand dollars does not end up getting used, then it will come before us again, what to grain it to?
Uh, it will, it will not come before you again. So they're contingency projects and depending on what we end up with, they'll be probably divided up as equally as we can.
But we are not funding those out of this money?
That's the recommendation.
Okay. Does that help? A. Campos?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Terrific. I would entertain a motion.
If we have no other Commissioners that are willing to comment at this time, I will move the Planning Commission, close the public hearing on the use of the funds for the twenty twenty? I've got the wrong year on this one. Twenty twenty-one Community Development Block Grant Program.
I second. Is the motion to also recommend it to City Council as well? Is that, or is it just the motion to close?
I'll make, I'll make the full motion. So, and I further move that the Planning Commission forward recommendations as presented to the City Council Workshop for consideration.
I second.
Let the record show that it was moved by Commissioner J. Campos and seconded by Commissioner Cochran. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Let me try this again. Let the record show, it was moved by Commissioner J. Campos and seconded by Commissioner Cochran. This motion passed unanimously. Uh, can staff tell us how this will move forward?
It, it goes to City Council, um, Workshop and, and they'll consider your recommendation and then returns to City Council for a formal motion and vote.
Terrific. Thank you very much. So now, we are going to a public hearing on...
Madam Chairman, uh, sorry to interrupt, if we could actually move to the item D under Public Hearing Street Connectivity?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Unless anyone else is opposed. All right. So we are actually going now to a code amendment. And this is a, uh, ch, 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 this is master file number MF, sorry, it's CA two oh one nine zero thirteen regarding street connectivity. We will start our discussion with comments from city staff.
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chairman, uh, Chairwoman. Uh, good evening, uh, members of the Planning Commission, this code amendment is, uh, for the street connectivity, uh, that we've been working on, it's been ongoing since December of twenty nineteen. Uh, this is the second public hearing for the proposed code amendment, and the purpose of this report is to provide some additional information and guidance background on the amendment, um, as we've done so over the past few months. Uh, prior staff reports have focused on identifying the need, the benefits, and the general transportation planning guidance, in particular, identifying and evaluation of existing conditions and constraints that have indicated Pasco's, uh, block patterns are becoming increasingly challenging for all users and modes to navigate, uh, throughout our community and city. So, new to this report, it's not as lengthy as prior ones, uh, however, new to this report, our reference is to, uh, minimum intersection spacing, which we brought up briefly at the last, uh, at the last meeting, uh, the minimum spacing between intersections and also street names. Uh, the Transportation System Master Plan, which we've identified, um, uh, a little bit throughout the Planning Commission, um, has, has gone through a pretty extensive evaluation, um, and that, uh, they will be given a report, actually just an update to Pasco Planning Commission on the twenty-seventh of this month, but throughout the evaluation that the, uh, master plan has gone through, they've identified a variety of, of, uh, measures for us to take into consideration. Obviously, street connectivity and block pattern is a big one, uh, street names and minimum spacing, um, are others that they've identified. And, uh, we felt that those two were relevant enough to this code amendment to include them. Um, if the, uh, Planning Commission believes that's appropriate, there are others, um, recommendations that we'll bring back as separate items, um, because they're, they're a little too different for us to feel comfortable concluding with this amendment. Um, so the focus of today's report is a brief presentation, uh, to share additional information on the impacts, uh, particularly with the emergency response and safety. And as you may have, uh, seen in the staff report, uh, variety of studies, uh, have shown that increased street connectivity improves, uh, emergency responders' access, offering multiple route options for answering emergency calls. And, uh, compared to transportation systems dominated, um, by large blocks and, uh, and variety of cul-de-sac patterns, um, a highly connected street network shorten the physical distance emergency responders have, uh, to respond to their, uh, emergency calls, and it's basically a geometry issue, a straighter line is more efficient. Um, and so you may remember that staff received letters of support from various local, regional and state agencies and organizations, including the Pasco Fire Department, and so Chief Bob Gere of the Pasco Fire Department, I believe, is on the line and has a few, uh, words or comments, uh, that he wanted to provide, uh, to supplement staff's reports and ongoing efforts at addressing street, uh, street connectivity in the city of Pasco. So, if Chief Bob Gere is, is still with us, um, love to hear comments.
Uh, thank you, Jacob. I am still with us, or with you and with all of you. Um, the, picture yourself as a new firefighter in the city of Pasco. The city covers approximately thirty-three square miles, and we have a very varied street pattern within the city, um, and trying to remember where all those streets are. We don't have a standard that, that sets, um, how streets are named, and that's one problem, and then we look at the connectivity in terms of response times. Uh, we can have units, uh, fire engines or medic units responding to an emergency and, and they can be on an arterial and looking at back into that housing development with a mirrored of cul-de-sacs and winding streets and how do exactly do they get in there, uh, and find that location within an established response time? Pasco actually has a, um, a response time that is far exceeds the national standard. The national standard's four minutes, we have a council adopted standard of six minutes, uh, and we struggle to meet that over most of the city. So, we've got to, as the city, we've got to look at how, how do, how can we improve this? And it's not necessarily making, um, less dense developments, but how do we get connectivity through those developments so that people can get there in a reasonable timeframe, our fire responders?
Thank you very, very much for your testimony, and, um, we kind of went out of order because normally what happens is you present and then we ask you questions. Correct. So, I want to go to my fellow Commissioners to find out, do you have any questions you would like to ask of staff at this time?
I guess, uh, it's great to hear about the response times, is there, um, is there anything changed in the, the recommendations as like, you know, you have four scenarios, have, have they, how have those four scenarios changed based on this new information, or have they been, you just wanted to add the new information, or?
Uh, yeah, no, the, the scenarios one through four are actually the same, um, the, the new information, I guess, is new to the staff report, but was definitely, uh, used throughout the development of the scenarios, and the Transportation System Master Plan, um, has recommended scenario number, I'm sorry, scenario number one. Um, however, uh, we didn't want to provide just one option for the Planning Commission, and, and this is a public hearing, so we, we'd like to hear back, um, from the Planning Commission and others if there are, uh, specific thoughts on any of the scenarios or variations or general questions that they, uh, they'd like to have, uh, staff, uh, address.
Well, I believe at one of the last, uh, meetings, we shared with you what our preferences were, didn't we? Of the four options?
I, I, I don't recollect specific recommendations from, uh, all the Planning Commission members, we, we did hear, um, I, I think, uh, some general guidance, um, and, and because this is a pretty significant, the, the change of the code is actually relatively minor, but the change of what it represents is, is, is significant for the entire city of Pasco, and obviously, I think we can see from those who've provided letters of support and, um, with, uh, Chief Bob Gere's comments representing the Pasco Fire Department, um, I, I think you can see how wide-ranging and impactful and beneficial the, the code amendment, uh, is that staff is proposing, uh, prior to making a, this is a continued public hearing, but, but I think, uh, before moving forward with a formal recommendation, staff would just like to make certain that, uh, we understand what the Planning Commission, uh, would like us to move forward with, uh, and if there's anything further that we can address, if we want to eliminate two of these scenarios, uh, or whatever combination Planning Commission believes is appropriate, staff would be interested in learning about them, addressing them and coming back, uh, not only with, um, likely a, a recommendation in August, but there will be a, a more thorough memorandum and report because each of these staff reports has provided different sense of data, and we'd like to put together a formal report so that the Commission has a, a comprehensive, uh, look at what we're proposing here and why.
Thank you for clarifying, um, and I note that the recommendation is just for us to continue the public hearing, so there isn't actually a motion that will have to be made today. Fellow Commissioners, any other comments you would like to offer to staff?
I had a couple other questions, but I wanted to make sure people on the phone had a chance to.
I cannot figure that out to see if any, uh, colleagues would like to, or have raised their hands?
All right, well, so, I guess for me, one of the things I, I noticed about terms of recommendations is, it seems like scenario one and twos are rela, are relatively, the pros are good and not too many cons versus when you get into scenario three and four, you start to say, well, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, have an impact on walkable and we're also gonna, you know, decrease the benefit of the amendment, and so it seems like, you know, again, if that's a, I'm not an expert, of course, in this, this science and planning science, but if that's really, those pros and cons are accurate, it seemed to me a natural thing then to maybe consider, um, you know, a potential recommendation of, uh, of eliminating scenario three and four, but since we're in public comments and we have another month, maybe there are developers or others that have to weigh in that can tell us other pros and cons that we're not aware of, so.
So, I want to piggyback off that. For me, it would be nice to see if there's an example, see like an overlay, right? Cause it's nice I can see this number, but if you give me an example of a physical block that already exists that meets this description, I might be able to say, okay, that's, I got that, I understand that.
Yeah, and then at the June, uh, Planning Commission meeting, we had, um, uh, actually quite a few slides, uh, addressing each scenario, and, and I can definitely forward those over to the Planning Commission, um, tomorrow, so you can have that.
Yeah, this is Paul Mendez, I just have a personal preference, uh, I tend to like a scenario two because it has the smaller block length, which I think will lead to a more livable, walkable community, which is, I think, uh, what we want, what we're looking for, and I also like that the block perimeter is a little longer, uh, that will lead for more additional lots according to the write-up here, so I think that would be my initial preference. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Campos, I, I want to piggyback off that, yeah, I believe scenario two is probably the one that I was leaning on, like, you know, I live over here in, in West Pasco and just, um, it's just forever to walk and just to kind of get around and the connectivity is, is kind of really, really difficult, um, so I was, I was, uh, looking at scenario one or two as well.
I like one.
Madam Chairwoman and Chief Gere?
Pardon me?
I said Madam Chairwoman and Chief Gere?
Yes. Please proceed.
I think scenario one, oh, one and two are, are acceptable to us. I think one of the things that's very important is getting some kind of standardization of street naming and numbering. If you're a young Pasco firefighter that comes into this city to work for us and he may live, they, he or she may live here, but they've never had to learn the city, and we're covering thirty-some square miles and it's two in the morning in a snowstorm and they get dispatched to a two-hundred-foot-long street with a name on it that they have to draw out of their memory? It just doesn't happen. It, it causes us a lot of response time problems, so I would like to support getting some sort of standardization of street naming and using more numbering, um, and encouraging that so that we can grid, they can grid faster and get out of the station and get in route to where they're going. End of report.
Thank you very much for your, for your comments, and I would just like to echo, um, I somehow didn't notice last time that the city of Kennewick's, uh, recommendations were cited regarding, uh, naming the types of streets or avenues, I, I think that could be really helpful, I guess it's gonna get hard because we have so many of those cul-de-sacs, um, and then, uh, I think numbering is a great idea, but, um, I also like the consistent street names, I know we run into problems, though, when they are in different developments because it's hard to know when one stops and the other picks up. That's the only thing. Any other comments from the Commission? Well, with that, I know that the recommendation is, did you want to? Gosh darn it. I think we can't. Gosh darn it. I think we can. All right, so let's do that. Let's go to the public hearing, forgive me. Um, any individual who wish to, wishes to speak on this particular item, now is the time to come forward. Please state your name and the city of address for the record.
Caleb, you're unmuted.
Please, Caleb.
Madam Chair, Caleb Stromstead, City of Pasco. I guess this is going to be continued. It'd be nice to have some reference points, especially on the block length. To what, uh, Kennewick, Richland and West Richland, what their standards are. Just so we have some sort of reference point for the commissioners to look at. Because the, the six hundred and sixty foot block length is pretty significant. One of the things to consider of what that would do, it, it actually reduces your, your density. Because you're putting more streets where there would be homes. And then, um, whether or not it's a benefit to traffic movement, when you typically add more intersections, that doesn't help traffic flow. And, um, it's going to add additional costs. So not only do you, um, decrease the, the, the gross density of what you can achieve on the, on a lot density. Uh, you're increasing your infrastructure costs and so the end user ultimately pays for that. So it's, it's a significant consideration when you're driving up the cost of development. Ultimately, that doesn't bode well for affordable housing, so those are just some things to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Stromberg.
I would recommend that the commissioners ask, like specifically ask the staff to provide the, uh, the other jurisdictions. Uh, comparable standards as a reference. I think that'd be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Stromberg. And you're in the, which city are you in? Pasco?
Uh, Stromstead.
Apologies, uh, for messing with your name. Um, did you want to say something?
Uh, I can wait.
Okay.
I was gonna say, weren't, weren't those comparables in the packet from last month as well?
Yeah, and my apologies, I, I didn't make this report as lengthy as the others. But, but again, to reiterate, uh, something I mentioned earlier, that the report that'll come before you in August will be, will be thorough. And it will have references to, uh, not only the neighboring jurisdictions, uh, but also those of comparable size. And, and I'd like to reiterate that this is a direct, um, output from not only the transportation system master plan. Which is being, uh, conducted by, uh, certified transportation engineers and planners. Um, but this has been an ongoing, uh, recommendation from the Washington State Department of Trade, uh, Transportation. Uh, there was a study done when one eighty-two was conducted, uh, completed. Uh, that had recommended connectivity and short block lengths. Um, and with regards to the, uh, the discussion on density, uh, some of our, our densest housing. In, uh, the region actually is located, uh, in the neighborhood that we're sitting in today. Um, and prior to the standard that exists today of one thousand three hundred and twenty feet. Uh, the standard was actually four hundred feet. So we're not going that far back. We're not, we won't recommend that far of a, of a decrease. But, um, obviously there's been some ongoing discussions that staff would like to move forward with and present to the planning commission.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez. And, uh, do we have anyone else who wants to speak other than having heard from Mr. Stromstead?
I'm, uh, not seeing further hands, although, although there are still two members on the, on the attendee list. Ms. Torres and Mr. Zavala.
Okay. No one has raised their hand to speak right now. And I do not have to close, I don't have to close the public comment. I don't have to strike the gavel. And the recommendation, which I had begun reading earlier. Prior to holding the public hearing, says that, uh, we are supposed to just accept public comments. On the proposed code amendment and continue the public hearing to the August twentieth, twenty twenty planning commission meeting. Beautiful. Okay, we are now going to go back to block grant B. Let me move, let me find my block grant B. That is not it. We're not doing street layout. Got it. Okay. So we are now, uh, going to be hearing. We're doing our public hearing on block grants. The twenty twenty-one community development block grant, CDBG. Did I just do that? Gosh darn it. Yeah, that's what I meant. Okay. We are on the twenty twenty-one home fund allocations. Which is number BGAP twenty twenty zero zero four. And I would ask staff if we have any. Thing you'd like to share with us about it.
Well, again, uh, the, this is the second of two public hearings, although this one tends not to attract too much attention. Um, but Pasco, Kennewick and Richland are part of a home consortium. So, uh, otherwise, uh, we would not be able to qualify for these funds. Uh, we're starting to see a number of, um, paybacks of, uh, loans. Or down payment assistance loans that were given out many years ago. So we estimate we'll receive program income of about one hundred thousand dollars. If, if the planning commission recalls, we revised the guidelines for down payment assistance. About a year ago, maybe. That, um, because we were noticing that with the increase in housing prices, people weren't able to qualify. Because they, the, the maximum of ten thousand dollars was not making enough of a dent. To make the, them qualify through their particular lender. So that was increased to twenty thousand, if I'm not mistaken. And, uh, we expect that we can get about twenty-five projects, down payment assistance, first time home buyers. Uh, through the, uh, estimated entitlement funds and the program income. That we tentatively expect to receive in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one.
Terrific. Um, I would like to find out if commissioners have any questions or comments for staff. I do. I will ask, I noticed that the proposed activities, um, it says initially target the Longfellow Museum neighborhoods. Um, I know museums around here, Longfellow is.
It's, um, roughly south of Sylvester and north of, uh, let's say Clark.
Okay.
Uh, between tenth and fifth, roughly.
I was just curious, um, why, I know those are low and moderate income census tracts. Do we not have them elsewhere in Pasco?
Yep, we do. Um, and, um, we, we just don't see a lot of activity in the Longfellow Museum neighborhoods. But they are low to moderate income census tracts. And, uh, if push ever came to shove, we would favor an application from that neighborhood. As opposed to one that isn't in that neighborhood. So far, that's never happened. But essentially everything east of three ninety-five qualifies as a low to moderate income census tract. And that there's three, three or four, two hundred through two thousand, two hundred and four, I think.
Thanks for clarifying that. All right, not seeing any questions from my fellow commissioners. I will now open the public hearing. Any individuals who wish to speak on this particular item, now is the time to come forward. Please state your name, city of address for the record.
I don't see any additional, uh, attendee or commenters, Madam Chair. I would like to check with Mr. Stromstead, uh, uh, do you wish to speak to this item, Caleb?
Uh, no, I don't have any.
Okay, going, going, gone. I'm closing our public hearing. I would entertain a motion for my commissioners, fellow commissioners. Yeah, it's just on the back of the home, here.
After discussions, the staff evaluation has recommended that anticipated twenty twenty home entitlement funds be allocated to the first time home buyer. Home buyer down payment assistance program, a contentious project for new construction, infill or tenant based rental assistance. May also be added if needed to meet timel, timeliness. The activities set forth above would be best meet the city's consolidated plan and most effective in carrying out the objectives for the city in twenty twenty-one. If conditions of the housing market make it difficult to use funds as planned, Pasco may consider joining forces with Kennewick. And Richland to allocate unused funds for acquisitions and or infrastructure or for low income. Do I need to read this whole thing?
I, I think you just need to read the recommendation at the bottom. The motion.
Sorry, wow. We're rusty. I apologize. I move planning commission close the public hearing on the use of funds for the twenty twenty-one community development block grant program. I further move the planning commission forward recommendations as presented to city council for consideration.
I second that.
Okay, let the record show that it was moved by Commissioner Jay Compost, seconded by Commissioner Mendez?
Yes.
Oh, wait, I forgot to ask people to vote. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, no opposed. Let the record show it was moved by Commissioner Jay Compost, seconded by Commissioner Mendez. The motion passed unanimously. And the path forward from staff?
Same thing. It goes to council workshop and then, um, for a formal vote. And, uh, probably the next council meeting after the workshop in August, first part of August.
Thank you very much, Mr. White. So we are now going to item C. Which is a request for a comprehensive plan amendment. And, uh, the master file number is BGAP twenty twenty zero zero four. We will start our discussion with comments from city staff.
Thank you, uh, members of the planning commission, and this is amendment, uh, to the city's, uh, uh, major update to the comprehensive plan. Uh, so tonight's presentation, uh, will focus on the additional elements required of the comprehensive plan. Prior, uh, the, the prior meetings have focused, uh, more on land use. And at the June meeting, we, we did present specifically on land use, transportation and housing. However, there's over ten requirements to have, uh, in a comprehensive plan. So tonight, we want to provide an update on, on, on a few of the others, uh, to, for the planning commission to have, uh, for review. So, uh, tonight we'll focus on the, uh, those highlighted capital facilities, utilities, economic development, parks, recreation, critical areas. And shoreline. And, uh, obviously the comprehensive plan is broken into two, uh, s- major documents. The first is the goals and policies, a little bit of a shorter document. And volume two, the supporting analysis, that's where you'll find the majority of the information, the data, the survey. Um, and additional information about each supporting element. So I just wanted to keep, uh, providing that information, uh, for the public and planning commission to have. So the capital facilities element provides, uh, information on all capital projects necessary to accommodate. Uh, the city's expected growth through the year twenty thirty-eight, a twenty-year timeframe, uh, from the beginning of this plan. Uh, this includes documenting all the funding and revenue sources and demonstrating the integration with land use. And, uh, extremely important is the alignment with, uh, existing adopted plans. And planned, uh, or future, future plans the city has. So, uh, the types of facilities that are evaluated include, uh, all those in transportation. So that's, uh, streets, sidewalks, freight, airport, um, water, sanitary and sewer. Stormwater and drainage, parks, open space, public buildings, facilities and services. So all of those are included, um, in the capital facilities element. And this is a pretty critical element because this is where you'll find the, kind of the price tag, um, which you'll see here, um, the next slide or two. These are the facility types and what we must identify. So obviously the existing inventory, the forecasted needs, which is aligned with the, uh, growth. Uh, the locations, the six-year financing plan, a requirement of the Growth Management Act. And the, again, coordination with, with, uh, planned land use. So, uh, just some considerations of factors here, obviously the population growth for the city of Pasco has been quite rapid. And so the things that we need to consider when developing the capital facilities element, uh, obviously taking into consideration the, the, the growth. The associated land use, the, uh, economic development component, the level of service, which is a requirement. So that, uh, as we grow, our services don't deteriorate. Uh, the budgeting and consistency to make sure that when one plan changes, the others, uh, change with it. And so that's kind of the overall goal. We want everything to kind of nest within each other, the comprehensive plan. It's kind of that big overall umbrella and we'll have others underneath it. We want to update them as necessary. So this is, uh, look at the six-year capital improvement plan. Uh, this may have been a slide you saw, uh, during the urban growth area, uh, presentation. Uh, back in, uh, I believe, uh, June or May. So, uh, two hundred and forty-nine million, uh, to provide service for the additional six years, um, as required. Identifying the internal, um, I'm sorry, the funding sources and revenue. So there's a variety of them. Uh, again, just to reiterate, uh, that, um, this is why it's really important for us to nail down the land use component. To make sure that, uh, our facilities that, uh, end up being, uh, constructed or planned. Are being able to be used efficiently by the supporting land uses. So, um, uh, obviously a pretty significant price tag. A lot of this is, uh, uh, I, I guess, um, the, uh, expectation to be required as development occurs. You'll have streets extended improvements made to, uh, capacity improvements, uh, placement of sewer. And there's, uh, for instance, right now, there's an addendum, and a, a second kind of addendum to the sewer plan that's undergoing. So again, consistency with ongoing and planned facilities in the, in the city of Pasco is critically important as we move forward. Uh, with the additional growth here. This is kind of a pie chart, uh, breakdown, uh, the, uh, where the, uh, the costs are. So significant costs for sewer, transportation, process, water, reuse facility, water, et cetera. And a few maps to show, um, the draft, uh, urban growth area and draft future land use. Um, well, actually not the land use, but the, the way water infrastructure will service the area. Um, obviously the majority of it, uh, doesn't exist out there because there's not much out there. But as the area grows, uh, we do intend to see these begin to populate. So here's water. I believe the next one is, uh, sanitary and sewer. And you can see, uh, the significant gap, uh, south of one eighty-two and west of three ninety-five. And then I think the next one is, uh, transportation improvements. This is one I believe you saw at a prior meeting as well. As we grow, obviously we're going to need new streets, uh, bigger streets. More capacity, signals, stop signs, um, identified improvements. And although this is, uh, for the comprehensive plan, keep in mind that the transportation system master plan will take an even more refined look. At these improvements. And so this may be adjusted, uh, in mid twenty twenty-one. Um, as that plan finishes. But for now, for the comprehensive plan efforts, this is a kind of draft transportation improvements that we expect to, uh, to see over the next twenty or so years. So on next is economic development, um, similar to capital facilities. We want to make sure that this aligns, uh, with regional and state efforts. Um, included with the economic development ele- element as a profile, identifying community needs, workforce needs, including strategies and priorities. Some, uh, background data on unemployment and historical employment in the tri-cities compared versus the state and national. Um, the unemployment rate in the tri-cities, this was in twenty seventeen, was slightly higher than the state and national average. Historical employment in Benton Franklin County has, uh, grown quite a bit. This is non-farm, uh, total non-farm jobs. Um, approximately a hundred and thirty-five thousand jobs in twenty seventeen across the two county area. This is an employment distribution, uh, for just. for just the, actually, the city of Pasco and the region and the state. And it might be kind of hard to read the graph, but on the right side, I pulled out some highlights that I thought were important. The employment in Pasco is relied heavily on ag, agriculture, manufacturing, transportation, warehousing. Obviously, that 395 quarter is extremely important to our economic growth here. That represents about 36% of all jobs. Government and public service make up about 16%, and less than 12% is within that professional, technical, finance, real estate, kind of your typical office job. So less than 12% are in those industries. So some more information about the household median income. Obviously, these and the educational attainment of Pasco and the region and the state, these are important for us to evaluate as we look forward expansion and try to identify what we can do as a city to continue strong growth in a variety of industry sectors. And talked about the alignment. This, I believe this is all of them that I know we have documented alignment and coordination with. But the Port of Pasco is a significant economic developer for Pasco. The downtown Pasco Development Authority works heavily in our downtown area. The Tri-Cities Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and TRIDEC are big agencies that we rely upon. The Pasco Chamber of Commerce, the Benton Franklin Council of Governments actually develops a community economic development strategy that kind of takes a regional approach for us. And obviously, the Visit Tri-Cities and Tri-Cities Chamber of Commerce is underway with their My Tri effort, taking kind of a regional effort at identifying goals and strategies. And I wanted to pinpoint Somos Pasco because that was a very big effort that brought together, I believe, well over 600 comments or state comments, and was led by the city of Pasco, the Port of Pasco, Franklin County, with funding support from the Council of Governments to develop specific strategies that you'll see on the next slide. Try to make this a little nice for everybody to see. But these are the economic development priorities identified out of this Somos Pasco effort, which works as our economic development strategy for Pasco. So Pasco to be welcoming, livable, family-friendly, multicultural, affordable, safe, and connected. And so while those are pretty broad-based, the comprehensive plan offers some information below each of these categories and does frequently reference the Somos Pasco effort. It's actually, it's great that our comprehensive plan actually takes into account plans that were just recently adopted or very well vetted. That is the point of a comprehensive plan. So it's very helpful to have that effort underway prior to the comp plan's effort. So a little bit more into the strategies, investing in education, identifying and building on Pasco's strengths as a food processing logistics distribution center, increasing affordability, not only for housing, but likely business creation and retention, business development, and looking ahead to local technical and creative employment, identifying homegrown local services and retail and business training. So when we go back to the land use discussion and see the increase in commercial spaces throughout the city of Pasco and changing up the land use patterns and what we may have been used to over the past few decades or so, the Somos Pasco effort was a big driver of that. That study identified what the community had in mind for the growth of Pasco. So we wanted to make sure that we were considerate of that and use it to its full advantage. So a little bit of information on parks and open space. Unfortunately, I don't have anybody from Parks and Rec to help with these, but obviously, these are important elements of the comprehensive plan. And so parks and open space, similar to the inventory of capital facilities, takes a look at all of our open space, the level of service, the amount of people per acre that are being served. Are they being served equitably and distributed across the city? We do expect to see an increasing need for park space and access to park space as the city continues to grow. You can see kind of a basic analysis with the total land and acres allocated towards each kind of park. Pasco has definitions for the different parks. Quite a bit of acres, obviously, in the city, but that'll be increased, obviously, as we grow. Critical areas and shoreline. This is a requirement to address. The Growth Management Act requires us to protect and enhance using the best available science and identify and protect critical areas and resource lands. And these critical areas include wetlands, fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas, aquatic habitat, frequently flooded areas, and geological hazard areas. So quite in-depth. And this actually references heavily the shoreline management program and plan that I believe the Pasco Planning Commission adopted within the past three or four years, 2016 perhaps. So again, another document that was approved and planned, well evaluated, is being able to be used in the comprehensive plan. So quite helpful again for us. Some more information. That's not the entire city, but just a snippet of the level of identifying the lands in the city that would qualify for the shoreline management program, and again, under the critical areas and shorelines element. So that's what we have today. We, I did want to brief the planning commission that we did extend the public comment period for the comprehensive plan's draft environmental impact statement through the end of the month, so through July 31st. Staff has begun reviewing the comments received so far. There's well over 185 specific comments that we received. We are working on addressing each one of them as we should. And we should be reaching out to specific commenters or requests or questions that we've received thus far on the comp plan and the associated urban growth area. Probably within the next two weeks, we'll begin reaching out to members of the community who ask to be consulted about either specific properties or specific land use. Again, land use and urban growth areas are extremely challenging and complex. It's never going to be perfect. And our intent is to make sure that the final product meets the standards that the planning commission and council has set for the comp plan while also meeting the Growth Management Act's requirements. So we do hope to reach out to those commenters probably by mid-August at the very latest, because we will be back on August 20th with an update with the comprehensive plan. We do believe a special meeting may be necessary. Obviously, we have quite a few items at the planning commission, and we do want to give the comprehensive plan its due attention. And so there may be an opportunity for us to have a special meeting for the comprehensive plan so that we're not presenting and sharing time with other important items. So August will be busy, and then September, we look to continue public hearings with the planning commission and hopefully take that towards the city council before the end of September. That wraps up my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gonzalez. So I will now go to comments and questions from fellow commissioners. Let me just remind us that our recommendation is merely to accept the public comments on the plan to continue the public hearing till the next meeting. Okay, with that, questions from fellow commissioners? I, you do have one. Okay, Commissioner Cochran.
I wanted to ask about the parks and shoreline. As we grow and as we want to have more park space, how, and the shoreline space, shoreline management stuff, how does the, you know, all along the river, the Army Corps of Engineer property, how does that come into? Can, you know, we have places like Wade Park and we have Chihuahua. Do you get to consume more of that Army Corps property in agreement with the Army? Or do you have to take that new park space out of other spots? I'm just curious how, you know, does it always, how do we utilize this vast amount of open shoreline that we have that's Army Corps?
Well, in Pasco's case, it's their park, their public park. So it's kind of a done deal as far as that goes. I know that there is some...
So all the shoreline that's Army Corps in here is officially in Pasco's case a park, but it's just maybe not developed?
Actually, I think it, I'm trying to remember, and I think it all is developed as park. There is a stretch as the river curves northward, far, the far western portion of Pasco, like at the end of Harris Road and Court and Shoreline, if you can recall how that goes, by the gravel pits there. There's a significant strip of property between Shoreline Road and the river that is owned by the Corps of Engineers, not yet in the city limits. And I believe our shoreline master program does designate that as a, not a manicured developed park, but a walkable park, a nature park, I'm going to say, or wildlife enhancement areas. Maybe that's a better way to put it.
Elaborate on, if I remember right, a few years ago, Army Corps was either in a city council meeting or a planning commission meeting, but they, if I remember right, were more than willing to work with us on getting, it was just they had to go through all the bureaucracy to get it turned over to the city of Pasco, if I remember right.
Yeah, and there is an effort. I don't know if it's moving very quickly, but TRIDEC was leading an effort for reconvenance is what it was called. And Pasco did identify several core properties that we would certainly be interested in having re-conveyed back to the city. They weren't all along the river, but I think there were some strips along the river between the high watermark and land, essentially, roughly east of 182.
Mr. Gonzalez, I had a question. I was noticing on the categories that were listed of the comprehensive plan, historic preservation was one of them, but you didn't cover anything about that in your overview. And I was just wondering, is that something we can anticipate? You going into more depth on?
Those are the GMA goals, not necessarily.
Ah, okay, nonetheless.
It will be addressed in the comprehensive plan, but may not have its own separate chapter or element.
Thank you all for helping clarify that. With that, we have no more comments or questions from commissioners. We are now going to open our public hearing. And we're going to open it for public comment, rather. So any individuals who wish to speak on this particular item, now is the time to come forward and speak. Please state your name and the city of address for the record.
Okay, Madam Chair, I have Mr. Stromstedt still as an attendee and Mr. Docstetter. Mr. Stromstedt is listed first. I'll ask him if he wishes to speak on this item.
Mr. Stromstedt, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I'll just say a couple of things. Just wanted to commend staff for working on responding to those comments and looking forward to hearing those responses and definitely available to help assist anyway Jacob in setting up those meetings with the different commenters. And I also had a question for staff, if there is any discussion on or from the planning commission on changing the commercial designation on the old overding property, if that's gone anywhere amongst the staff. That's all I have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Stromstedt. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah, with any land use changes that may or may not occur for the urban growth area or elsewhere for the comprehensive plan, we wanted to bring back kind of a catch-all, either at the August 20th planning commission meeting or the special meeting yet to be determined. But those will be addressed again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez. I will now ask Mr. Docstetter. Did you want to comment?
And Mr. Docstetter is self-muted.
He is self-muted. And he will just have to tell us his city of address if he unmutes.
Again, waiting for Mr. Docstetter to unmute. Madam Chair, Crystal Torres is still listed as an attendee, as is Nicholas Zavala. I will unmute. She's self-muted as well. Mr. Zavala is... His microphone is on.
From Zavala, no comment.
Mr. Zavala has no comments.
Thank you. All right. It appears that we have no one else who wants to speak. I don't have to strike the gavel because we are not closing the public hearing. So with that, I am going to recommend the public, that the planning commission accept public comments on the proposed code amendment. Is it code amendment? Comprehensive plan. I got the wrong piece of paper in front of me. And continue the public hearing to the August 20th, 2020 planning commission meeting. Now, we are moving on to a workshop. And this is a workshop regarding HB 1920, House Bill 1923, regarding duplex, triplex, and courtyard apartments, as well as average lot size. Staff, would you like to comment on this?
Thank you, members of the planning commission. This is an update on House Bill 1923. You may remember that staff with the approval of the Pasco City Council in September, applied for the incentive program offered by the legislature's 2019 enactment of House Bill 1923, which was an effort to increase urban residential building capacity across the state. There was 13 code amendments or planned actions that we could take. The city of Pasco identified three that we thought were most useful and applicable for us and applied for the grants. We received a grant, would anticipate receiving up to $41,000 or so dollars with approval of all three or slightly different amounts depending on the official amendments that end up moving forward through the public process, commission, and council action. Grant funding obviously made available through the Washington State Department of Commerce. So the city of Pasco had identified three. You see those three in front of you. The first was the authorization of duplex, triplex, or courtyard apartments or fourplex on each parcel that is zoned for residential housing. Action two was the authorization of cluster zoning or lot size averaging in all single-family dwelling residence areas. And also, action number three was the authorization of accessory dwelling units in residential districts across the city of Pasco. So for tonight's, we're going to speak about action one and action two. Those are the code amendments that we're moving forward with to start with as they're a little bit, they're less cumbersome perhaps than action number three. So again, action one and two, this is a land use and housing kind of inventory. I'm sorry, in the city of Pasco, you can see that residential makes up 43% of all land in the city of Pasco. And if you see that pie chart or circle chart to the right, you can see that of the 43% that's allocated for residential land use, 84% is low density, 14% is medium density, and 2% is high density. And this next graphic tells you the distribution of the dwelling unit types within each. So detached, single-family units make up 71% of all of our units in the city of Pasco. Multifamily units with three to four, so kind of your triplex and fourplex, make up 6%. Multifamily with 10-plus units, so your larger, kind of your mid to larger apartments, make up 7%. Detached, I'm sorry, attached, so kind of your duplexes, and make up about 2%. So the point with this graphic is when you kind of identify with the prior slides, that 84% of our land is zoned for low density. And when we take a look just at the dwelling unit types, the detached unit is 71%. uh, the detached unit is seventy-one percent. So some pretty skewed numbers towards um, a particular dwelling type here in the city of Pasco. So not much uh, diversity. Um, this map shows you a breakdown. It's kind of an overview satellite view. Um, so in yellow, uh, those are the detached units. In orange, you um, might be difficult to see because there isn't many. Uh, but those are your duplexes, so there's kind of a few spread out throughout the city. Those in that blue or purple are multifamily. And you can kind of see the distribution of those throughout the city. Obviously, there's a little bit more color in central Pasco, a diff- a little bit more diversity, not much, but more. That map you see on the bottom left is actually from the Washington State Department of Health, and it's by Census Trax. The darker the red, the higher, um, the uh, it's an environmental health disparate impact map. So the darker the red, the more impact you are susceptible to, to uh, emissions, higher traffic, toxins, um, ozone, this, the tricenter region is uh, on the transportation side, part uh, potentially uh, designated an ozone attainment area uh, due to a variety of reasons. But obviously, you can see, um, there, there might be some thought uh, about the equitable distribution of dwelling types when we take into account the health impacts of what it looks like, uh, when you actually throw them on the map here. Uh, this is a map that I believe you've seen a few times before. This is the dwelling units, um, residential units by decade. So the darker the green, the more recent, um, not much surprise here. But again, uh, when you compare that with the prior map, you can see that Pasco uh, historically had built more diverse, more diverse housing. And uh, over the decades, it's kind of skewed again significantly towards one type. So kind of summarize all of that. Forty-three percent of all the city is reserved for residential. Seventy-one percent of that housing is detached. There's been a seventeen percent increase in the uh, percentage of detached units that make up our total housing since uh, the year two thousand, so a sig- a seventeen percent decrease uh, from two thousand of all the other multifamily duplexes, triplexes, et cetera. Eighty-four percent of our residential land is zoned for low density. And, and in the staff report, um, this, this isn't a thorough housing supply analysis that will come through uh, before any formal recommendation is done, but I think something that might be worth considering or at least acknowledging is that um, single detached units, uh, eighty-seven percent of our population lives in single-family detached units. Um, those units make up eighty-six percent of all of our houses in Pasco, which is twenty-six percent of the city's total land area. So detached units, eighty uh, eighty-seven percent of our population, twenty, about a quarter of our land. Uh, multifamily, so duplexes, triplexes apartments, they house thirteen percent of our population on less than one percent of the city's total land area. So I thought that was pretty significant, uh, drastic, uh, kind of noticeable numbers there. So again, just kind of preliminary analysis of our existing housing supply and also getting towards uh, the, the need and reason why we per- are pursuing some amendments with House Bill nineteen twenty-three. So action one was the authorization of duplex, triplex or a courtyard apartment, again, a fourplex on each parcel. And uh, the chart you see on this slide tells you where these uh, dwelling units are permitted and where they are not. And keep in mind that our low-density land use, which is a significant portion of the city's land, uh, permits RS twenty, RS twelve, and RS one. So we don't have, uh, I think twelve percent is uh, mi- medium density, two percent is high density, and that's where we allow the most diversity. And where we allocate the most land, that's where we actually restrict the amount of flexibility in dwelling unit types to be constructed in the city of Pasco. So um, my best attempt at identifying what this looks like, uh, so you can see on that top left, your duplex is your two units on one parcel with the shared wall. Triplex is the similar, three units, uh, with two shared walls, a courtyard apartment or fourplex. This isn't the only, uh, these are illustrative only, but similar, uh, uh, shared walls on one parcel. And that bottom left is actually what we, we see quite a bit in Pasco, which is pretty exciting, which is the zero lot line uh, dwelling type, which uh, from the outside looks like a duplex or maybe a giant house. But at the assessor level, when we look at parcel maps, it's two units sharing a wall on two separate lots. And so I, I think in Pasco, we have a lot of success and are seeing more interest in this. It obviously allows for increased density and some more flexibility for the private developers and also for those that want to live in Pasco. Um, and again, on the outside, they look just like what we've been experiencing in growth for housing over the past twenty or so years. But uh, when we look at a GIS parcel map, we differentiate them, them. And so like, the, the point of this was to show you that we, we sort of already allow this, it just looks different, um, at the parcel level. And uh, so these are some examples. I actually, the top left, the middle top, and the top right and bottom left are all in Pasco. These are actual uh, houses and units in Pasco. That bottom right is an example of a courtyard apartment. You don't see much of those, but Walla Walla has actually seen some uh, success with these, um, and a few other communities as well, I believe, Ellensburg. Um, this isn't from Walla Walla, but again, just some examples of what these units actually look like, um, from the street level. And so our intent, um, with this code is to continue evaluating uh, the impacts, particularly the increased amount of housing we may be able to house in Pasco. Uh, the amount of people and the efficiency it may be able to provide in some of our underutilized lands. If you remember, through the urban growth area, the city conducted a land capacity analysis. And the majority of our land, um, that was underutilized or vacant was um, uh, kind of in south of one eighty-two, west of three ninety-five, uh, kind of the Riverview area. And by allowing increased diversity of housing options, either for a builder or for a homeowner or renter, this offers some more flexibility in the kind of housing that they may have access to, um, here in the city of Pasco. So still working on this, a lot more work to come through, but wanted to provide a little bit of background on this particular code amendment before moving on um, to the second action. So this is the authorization of cluster zoning or lot size averaging. So the table you see on your left are the city's current requirements for the minimum lot size. So the minimum lot size obviously is, establishes the minimum size that a lot may be uh, for the associated uh, zoning district. As you get to the R two, three, and four, obviously, the decrease in the lot size required due to the necessity for added density. On the right, um, just again, as an example, this is a real uh, preliminary or a real plat in Pasco. But this is an R three zone with the minimum square foot of three thousand square feet. And you can see that uh, when we have applications come through, they're required to list the minimum square feet, square footage on each lot. So for this particular uh, development, the requirement was a minimum of three thousand square feet. And uh, the intent with this code is to actually allow an average. Um, now, the guidance from the uh, state law doesn't really put a parameter on the average uh, what that may be. I, I do believe that is something we would definitely want to consider. And so uh, again, just for an example, this is what a twenty percent threshold or average, kind of a buffer would look like for the associated zoning district. So as you um, see on the left, that's your zoning district. And um, on the uh, middle column, that's the current minimum square foot uh, requirement. On the right side is what it would be um, with the minimum lot size, um, uh, including an average. Um, again, so in an RS twenty, you could go down, uh, as an example, to sixteen thousand square foot. But your total must average twenty. And so the goal is to keep everything relatively the same, but allow some diversity. Um, obviously, on all of the land we have is uh, equal. There's hillsides, there's terrain, there's streets, there's curves, there's gutters, there's lakes, there's uh, maybe not lakes, but streams and natural habitat areas. Um, and we, this is, I think, an opportunity for us to really put together a um, a practical uh, toolkit for uh, home builders and uh, in the area to utilize land as best as they can or as creative as they can, um, keeping everything with an average um, kind of the same, but allowing some flexibility. Now, twenty percent is just an example. We would gladly take considerations and we'll do further research to see what this looks like in other regions, but this is a, a pretty unique, I'm sorry, unique opportunity with this particular action to take advantage of efficient land building in the city of Pasco while not being detrimental to um, the existing uh, characteristics of the zoning districts, but also allowing for additional infill and uh, building to occur. And when you combine this with the prior code amendment or the other code amendments that have been uh, approved over the past year and a half or two years, uh, comment made at the city council meeting on Monday was that where Pasco was beginning to build a toolkit for developers to utilize, and so that affordable housing won't become a um, a challenge, a bigger challenge for the city Pasco than it has uh, become in other cities uh, here in the state of Washington. So the next steps, uh, finalizing the existing conditions and supply analysis and assessment of the codes and also looking at the design standards. There's some other um, uh, items that we, we want to make sure we're not changing one particular code without addressing another. Um, looking at the potential capacity, continued public hearings. We do believe uh, some outreach would be beneficial for staff. So we would, um, we are anticipating putting together maybe a quick survey that we can send out to uh, anybody in the housing industry, whether it's real estate, private developers, landowners, um, or community members who are seeking housing along with agencies, to fill that out and see if we're aiming at the right place that they believe needs to be addressed. Um, follow up with some draft code amendments, and we believe fall twenty twenty, before the end of the year, we'll have formal recommendations that we can provide to the planning commission and eventually to the Department of Commerce, while upon adoption, um, we would receive some of those award uh, fundings. So that's all I have for House Bill nineteen twenty-three. Thank you and happy to take any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Gonzalez? Please, Mr. Cochran.
Um, so is it, uh, is the process that you will engage the development communities just via the survey? Have you already gotten a sense of themes of how they feel about this? I mean, it seemed like a great approach, the toolkit approach, the flexibility of lot size averaging. It seems like to be seen favorable. And then kind of the second part of that question, have we seen other jurisdictions where this, this uh, technique been applied and it's been seen success? Like other, where they're, you know, they've, they've tried it and the development committee loves it and it also gives the flexibility. That would be interesting to see if other jurisdictions have kind of a proven track record on this.
Yeah, um, I had mentioned Walla Walla. Walla Walla actually um, has gone through a really successful um, revision um, really to their entire zoning code, aimed at increasing flexibility. Um, it's actually pretty noteworthy and one that's mentioned quite a bit, um, in the planning association for the state of Washington. So Walla Walla, which is not too far from us. Um, Olympia went through a massive effort uh, at accessory dwelling units. And um, a lot of times you'll hear these, this type of housing identified as missing middle, um, right? And um, it's kind of the, the forgotten housing. We used to have a lot of it. In fact, uh, within two blocks of City Hall, you have a sixplex next to a fourplex, next to a duplex, next to a single-family dwelling unit, all on one block, next to a large apartment complex. So this is the kind of housing that used to be built likely because it was responding to what the community needed. Um, uh, so there's, there's been some other success stories. I know that Renton has had an increase in their accessory dwelling unit permits, so obviously the Puget Sound facing some affordable housing challenges, and Spokane has also taken these on. Um, now, with regards to House Bill nineteen twenty-three, there weren't many jurisdictions that had went forward with the proposed codes. Um, but again, I, I think the information that we have to date uh, demonstrate that this is a worthwhile endeavor. And the survey, um, I think is additional supplemental information that we can collect, um, maybe on a continuous effort from uh, the community. And also, that would be referenced when we come back to the planning commission and eventually the council as to why we believe this is a recommendation worth making.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right. With that, we will now move on to adjournment. With no further questions or comments, I recommend a motion to adjourn.
Uh, do we have a special meeting for other business?
Well, uh, Commissioner Campos, we were just discussing that. We'll try to put together uh, a better look at what is available and um, get that out to the commission so you can weigh in.
Okay, well, um, while I have the floor, I guess I would like to discuss about our meeting time. Um, we discussed about having possible other members of the planning commission weigh in when they joined us, but who knows when they'll join us. So I, me personally, six o'clock doesn't work. Um, I've not been able to make the last few meetings. I have my daughter, seems to be on every planning commission night. And uh, if we could possibly entertain an idea of, of six thirty and if we get additional, uh, you know, planning commission members, we wanna revote or redetermine a time. I think that would be reasonable, but I think moving forward from here on out, I'd ask the planning commission to weigh in on having a six-thirty start time for the meeting.
We'll put that out as well.
Thank you so much for raising that, Commissioner Gonzalez. If there are no other items, I recommend a motion to adjourn.
I motion to close the meeting.
I second.
Moved and seconded. The meeting is adjourned at seven forty-six P M. Thank you so much, everyone, for your attendance.